Okay. It's seven o'clock, like welcome to the 20th of January 11th. We've got a pretty lengthy day actually. Would you join in please?
I was witness to the fight in the United States of America. The world is one nation and not invisible.
Okay, let's see. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Pachon?
Here.
Mr. Gardena?
Here.
Mr. Penisal?
Here.
Mr. Moffin?
Here.
Mr. Mixel?
Uh-huh.
Mrs. Bright?
Here.
Mr. Tinsel?
Here.
Mr. Kail?
Here.
Actually, we do have a couple of public hearings. And these were published in Webster Herald. It was pretty hard to find the... It was in there, but it's hard to find it. It was titled...yeah, it was titled different. You know, the way they didn't have an actual template they usually do. And I'm gonna look it up, I found it. It was conspicuous, yeah. Anyways, we're there, it is there. So, Mark, why don't we get started? Go ahead.
The first scheduled item on the agenda tonight, pumping stuff with smoke. A shop sign located at 9 Ridge Road, applicant Mohammed Al Albin. Is requesting sign approval to allow the installation of a 24.8 square foot building mounted sign within the Webster Square Plaza. Thirty-seven point nine-one acre parcel located in a high intensity commercial district under section 265-7 in the code of the town of Webster.
So, anyone here for that? I can't see anything. No. Anyone here to represent it? Okay.
He came last week, but he came late. It was a miscommunication that happened in that...
Um, we'll leave it open, we'll see if he does show up later. Go ahead, move on to the next one.
The second one is Green Tea Aesthetic Signs located at 668 Ridge Road. The applicant is Grace Mato. And she is requesting sign approval associated with the installation of a seven square foot mounted sign on a 0.97 acre parcel located in a median intensity commercial district under section 265-7 in the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening, my name is Grace Mato. And I'm owner of Green Tea Aesthetics at 668 Ridge Road. I'm applying for the sign permit because I'm looking to replace a panel on an already existing freestanding sign at 668 Ridge Road. I've been working with vinyl signs for this project. And they are making a sign that is 18 inches by 56 and 34 inches. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Everybody concerned with Green Tea? Going to say? Saying the...
The town office plan board considering request by applicant Grace Mato to replace the seven square foot panel on the existing 91 sign located at 668 Ridge Road, 0.97 acre parcel, having FPL number 078.20-1-3. The plan board classifies as closed action under type 2 action under section 617.5C2. The state environment requirement review regulations, and therefore not subject to review.
Second. Okay, we have a motion. Second? You said?
Mr. Anderson?
Guys, I have an audio failure with the wiring, something just died. So, I've got to go back to my studio and get equipment. We are off the air until I can fix it, but you can keep going with your reading.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, five minutes.
Okay. Okay, motion approved. I'll make a motion. I'm sure the motion will prove the Green Tea Aesthetic Sign located at 668. Are withdrawing from the installation or replacing it with a seven square foot 91 sign? Okay, motion, you second?
Second.
You have a second, okay?
Aye.
Yes, you're all set?
Thank you very much.
In love with your business.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Ridge Terrace Cobble Grill Sign located at 1839 Ridge Road. The applicant Jessica Costa is requesting sign approval associated with the installation of a 28.3 square foot building mounted sign on a 2.60 acre parcel located in an ALB large lot single-family residential district under section 265-7 in the code of the town of Webster.
Hi, I'm Jamie here for Jessica from Vinyl Signs. So, we're actually only concerned with the north facing sign right now. I think Amy spoke with Josh and the west facing, they're gonna have to apply the reverions if they want to follow with that one. So, right now, we're just concerned with the 18 square foot north facing sign.
Where is this...
Down by my place.
Oh my god.
Down by my house. Where you draw the county line by mom and daughter, red area.
Used to be a police station. Oh, yeah. Is that where this is? Yeah. Okay, so, I think, is the business is already there, is it? Or you just put the sign up?
Yeah, we just put the sign up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, you're just looking at the north side?
Yes.
And the applicant gets the four square feet, that means that will be done.
Sure? Yes.
All right. Anybody any issues or anything? Any concerns? Okay, moving forward.
Town office plan board considering request by Jessica Costa to install 28.3 square foot building mounted sign located at 1839 Ridge Road, 0.97 acre parcel, having FPL number 081.21-1-2.21. The plan board classifies as closed action under type 2 action under section 617.5C2. The state environment requirement review regulations, and therefore not subject to review.
I'll second that.
Motion, you second? You second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Question? So, which one, the west or the north?
We're going with the north.
You're going with the north. Is that the 28 square feet?
That's 18 square feet.
That's the small one?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, motion, someone to... For the same? No, you need to make a motion.
Oh.
I'm sorry. If somebody makes a motion, you know.
I'll make a motion for Ridge Terrace Cobble Grill located at 1839 Ridge Road for approval of the north facing 18 square foot building mounted sign you guys presented.
Okay. Second. All you people too. Okay, we have a motion, you second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, good.
I'm the next one too.
Forget the other one?
Yeah.
We'll charge action for that. Okay.
I'll be glad.
The next one is take five oil change sign.
No.
True.
Oh, there's one number four, you know? I don't have that. I don't have that. Did anybody have it?
I don't have it.
You have it? Yeah, I don't have that. I've got them all, but I don't have... Ready?
Sure.
Go ahead. Okay.
Uh, let's see. Here we go. In truth mental health sign located at 807 Ridge Road, suite number 201. Applicant Jessica Costa is requesting sign approval associated with the installation of a 13.8 square foot building mounted sign of the Webster Wood Plaza, 3.54 acre parcel located in a median intensity commercial district under section 265-7 in the code of the town of Webster.
Jamie here for Jessica. Just changing the vinyl, same size as what's there now. Just changing the print on the sign.
Been a lot of activity over there lately.
Yeah.
All right. Steve, you get the... Okay, you? Oh, yeah. That's a simple replacement. All right, anybody, any issues?
No replacements are easier. I think when the signs get a little more complicated or a little vague, that's when it becomes more issue, because these are straightforward.
Yeah, that's something we've been talking about, Josh, about there. We actually talked a little bit about it today, but you know? It becomes arbitrary. At one point, you say this one can handle the house and this one can't. When you've got guidelines that are specific to colors and so on and so forth, so... I think we keep our deal going. Yeah, it's just, well, I guess it creates a lot of work, like for Josh, for Karen and her stuff, all paperwork and stuff, to try and eliminate some of that. We can talk about it later, anyways. All right, you could just hear him say that. Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Town office plan board considering request by Jessica Costa of the 13.8 square foot building mounted sign of In truth mental health located at 807 Ridge Road, suite 201, within Webster Wood Plaza, 3.54 acre parcel, having FPL number 079.18-1-69.11. The plan board classifies as closed action under type 2 action under section 617.5C2. The state environment requirement review regulations, and therefore not subject to review.
Okay, motion, you second?
Second.
You second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the In truth mental health sign located at 807 Ridge Road, suite 201, for the approval of a 13.8 square foot building mounted sign to replace an existing sign you guys presented.
Give me a motion here. You second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, so...
Thank you, have a good night.
Next application, take five oil change sign is located at 1045 Ridge Road. The applicant Evan Gettle is requesting sign approval to allow the installation of two building mounted sign, one monument sign, and instructional directional light finding sign associated with destruction of the take five oil change facility on a 112 acre parcel located in a median intensity commercial district under section 269-11 and 265-7 in the code of the town of Webster.
Great good evening, nice to see everybody. As you might recall, I'm Betsy. I'm the attorney representing this project, take five project. Mike from Club for Development is here. Evan is a professional casting engineer. As you might recall, the board ran, they had site plan approval with some conditions. Somehow, the signage did not end up in the package that made its way to the board, so we were coming back for signage. At the same time, Mike was dealing with his tenant, the take five, and the decision was this board could ask that they reduce the red band on the building. They actually kind of, I think, made some significant changes to the building, I think the board will be pleased with, but that red band had created a lot of... Had a lot of discussion about the red band. So, voila, there is no longer a red band. So, they reduced the amount of branding on the building itself. So, I think it looks like many of the other buildings along with already the newer brick buildings that you see. Earth tones, I think it's a pretty attractive looking building. But they do need some branding, and the signage didn't make its way through the package that you had at the last meeting. We did see the PRC contract, so there was this package, sign package submitted. We did hear that there were some concerns about the size and amount of signage. So, we actually have a modified package for you today. I'm gonna let Evan walk you through it, because he's already here. Essentially, we have a font and sign that hasn't changed, that's code compliant. On the front of the building, we have the take five, their brand sign. On the side of the building, we had, I think we originally had more signage. What's the length, we took off?
Stay in your car.
We took off the stay in your car.
We took that off, both sides, both sides. We also reduced in that signage package that Evan added to, the overall size of the oil can by about 30 percent. And the sign, I think this is yellow letter, oil change, and that's about 10 percent reduction in signage along the regular west elevation. So, we tried to hear what you were saying to PRC and respond appropriately.
This looks way better.
Did you say that you're not gonna have oil change sign?
The, yeah, correct. So, the stay in your car that was on both sides of the building is then completely removed. Per the PRC comment that...
So, you just have the oil change?
Correct. Which is the oil change?
Yeah, no, that's what we talked about.
Helping the board and helping with the change.
When I saw stay in your car, I just think that was a loop, you're out here, it makes sense.
Sure.
So, I played the two, yeah.
Well, their service does include... The customer does stay in the car, though.
Yeah, sure.
Hopefully, they don't.
I think anybody goes in there, it's like we go into a car wash, you don't get out of the car.
Hopefully not.
Okay, really, we're on the same page.
I'm sure it's happening. Yes, I agree, major improvements, thank you for your willingness.
It turns out, the one foot red band doesn't make any sense for everybody. So, we agreed to the 15 percent reduction, and then we went back and looked at it with a critical eye, and it didn't make any sense. So, I'm happy to report that.
Very happy, just like.
Now, what are you, what's the materials you've got here? The lower part, floor foot up? You got that here, it's dark brown, kind of?
It should be the same materials. I think it was just a...the hues, brown and tan were slightly changed from the original, but it should be the same material. We didn't change any material.
I think the color of the earth tones is just a little richer.
What is it?
Do you have the actual color?
Is that the brick or stone?
Brick on the, it's a brick. The dark brown is brick, yeah.
Yeah, cool, right. Just to brighten it up, yeah, that's...
The only thing that changed, the materials on the building have changed, they just deepened a little bit of the...
Some stone, yeah.
Much better looking without the canopy stuff on top and all that. To me, it looks classy.
Yeah. I think our, I think our, kind of, we agreed it also was organized.
All right. I think you've done a good job. Yeah? And let's see. You have to see that, no, this isn't a public hearing, this is a public hearing.
You already, I believe, have spoken.
I think we already did, didn't we? Yeah, we did. Yeah, no, we already did.
Really the modification of that site plan application.
All right, so, this is actually a modification to the signage and basically the design. So, so, what is the motion?
I do have one question. Sorry, I'm making a mistake. One sheet shows monument sign, it's analog.
Yeah.
Can you describe what analog is?
Uh, yeah, so, it's, they'll, that's where they put Happy Veterans Day, or Happy Memorial Day Weekend, or Happy July Fourth. It's just, they, they don't use it to advertise anything.
Is it scrolling?
No, 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 analog, so, it's like, it's the literal letters that they'll put up.
You put them in there?
Yeah.
How's that lit, too, by the way? Is that interior?
Yeah, it's interior LED.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Yeah, the key is not the head, but the wall is white.
Right, yeah.
All right, yeah, that's fine. Good, five for high, yeah. Okay, so, we wanna make a motion for the approval of the... I'll make a, I'll make a motion to be approved. The modifications to the take five oil change at 1045 Ridge Road. We can just use this drawing, because it got it down. And the oil change, the signs have been removed. Lower part is to be a brick material.
Yep.
Use it on there. Sign to be analog, so somewhere out in the white, you know, to put one, you know, kind of white up. And let's see, a sheet here, a few sort of stuff. And what's the... We can use, yeah, so I'm saying, we can just use that drawing. That's the latest and most current, we can just use all of it. That's the one you got it right there.
Right.
It's got the original system, yeah. Seven, ten, twenty-three. And let's see. And you got the sheet. You just said sheet, no, sheet, that's our... So, you never get construction, it's not?
I'm sorry.
Did we do that?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So, we're just accepting the drawing that's presented here? It's July, July 10th. Okay, we have a motion, you second? Mr. Pachon? Mr. Gardena? Mr. Moffin?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Penisal?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Bright?
Aye.
All right, you're all set?
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Next item on the agenda, Bank of America lighting upgrades. An active and non-national group, the applicant's project, Mexican drivers, is requesting preliminary final site plan approval. There's some pieces of public hearing associated with proposed lighting upgrades belonging to Bank of America within the Webster Plaza, 17.3 acre parcel located in a high intensity commercial district under section 269-11.
Good evening, members of the board, Jake Ndesto. Is everything all right?
No, this is not...
You're calling up?
It's going on the floor.
Okay, I'll reject a little bit. Jake Ndesto is going to field engineering design, the engineer for the project, and I'm the applicant. I'm going to report a question before you decide, a summary of the bottom sign for the lighting improvements to the Bank of America located at 1098 Ridge Road. This is part of the larger shopping center. And this project is really part of a larger, including project for Bank of America, as part of their exterior lighting program. But the ideal goal is to update all the existing fixtures around the banking facility with new energy efficient LED lights. This also reduces the frame, starboard footprint. And when doing that, we also look back at some legislation that's put in place to ensure ATM security in the state of New York, that's the ATM Safety Act. So, a lot of this has to do with security lighting around the bank, around the ATM and vest wheel areas. So, all the improvements are really targeted to comply with those regulations. So, currently, again, we are the in-house parcel, the next 17 acre parcel, with us, our, the actual bank itself being located in southeast corner of the parcel, closest to Ridge Road. All the proposed improvements, which include 48 fixtures surrounding the actual building themselves, will be part of this project. We're actually, because we're using energy efficient LED lights, we're actually able to remove five of the existing light that exist around the building itself. So, there's gonna be 53, no, sorry, 43 fixtures, and I include some of the double heads, or it's often that exists on the existing poles today. No new poles, everything will be LED, mounted at the exact same elevation that was previously out there. Again, it's the ability for us to remove those lights because we're using upgraded, more efficient LED fixtures. So, again, the area lights range from 15 to 28 feet for the higher poles around the building, with the soft lights, there's no wall pads proposed, being approximately eight feet off the grid. So, it gives us the ability to comply with that state legislation when it comes to ATM security for the facility. All the fixtures will be, again, LED, dark sky, compliant, everything is directly downwards. The board has any questions on the application, I can answer through the plans, and then the request authority.
Yeah, I think, I think you just answered it. The, I like the idea of LEDs. Downward, no focus out, do you roll over, anything like that?
Exactly, I did look, I did look at the back of the last sheet, has some of the details, getting very blade-looking LED lights, all directed downwards as much as possible, trying to reduce glare.
Who says, just out of curiosity, is this something that's, like you say, standard procedure or...
It's as far as the lighting?
Yeah.
So, there's a national program that Bank of America has, where it evaluates all their existing facilities when it comes to its lighting upgrades in these facilities. It's actually audited by Bank of America's third-party security team. It's actually considered part of the security measures for the bank, and the state also considers it that way. So, this is being done throughout the country and throughout the state of New York, so to upgrading a lot of the existing facilities to the state requirements. It's bringing some of them back into the water. So, initially approved, but bringing them back into, you know, light does, you know, go out after times, such as the old metal allies, so it's part of the program.
Okay, anybody, any questions? You got the diagrams, the diagrams are showing, it's great to me.
Yeah, so, a lot of what you're seeing is there's two ways you can look at it, it's all about the foot candles for these act measurements engraved for foot candles. Sometimes you show the isolines, which generally gets areas for, actually meant for larger shopping centers. In this case, it was, we thought it was more of worth to show the individual factors, and then each, those additional pages, where it has different lighting measurements, the different grades, because the state looks at it at different elevations, at different grades, different radiuses outside the actual facility itself. So, that's why you add additional pages, it goes additional candle measurements. So, just wanted to pull back this show.
Okay.
No?
Somebody wanna, you have to see that? Yeah, you should, yeah.
Town office plan board considering request by applicant Jessica Costa of the site lighting surrounding Bank of America located at 980 Ridge Road, Webster Plaza, 17.03 acre parcel, having FPL number 079.15. There's 2.1. The plan board classifies as closed action, the type 2 action under section 617.5C2. The state environment requirement review regulations, and therefore not subject to review.
Okay, you second?
Is it another public hearing?
Public hearing?
Yeah.
All right, well, this, if this is a public hearing, so if there is anyone who speaks either for or against this... Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing, go back to the board, thank you. Anybody, any other concerns? I mean, this is, it's a plan that they have, and that's like an engineering detail is all it is, really. all it is, really. It's badly, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Anybody, do I, you know? Not make your motion for a preliminary approval, uh, Bank of America lighting upgrades in ninety eight Ridge Road, Central Peter Street, units. Approval is to be constructed according to specification. Comply with all requirements of any state county county agency. All foods are subject to the common law.
Project ID is priority T dash two two zero four seven six.
Okay, so that's a motion. I have a motion, one of us. Do you have a vote on senior? Yeah. Yeah, we did.
We voted, uh, Mr. Anderson and, um, Mr. Mixal.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's how it's going, I don't understand where you're on.
Won't get in the record for trouble.
Okay, so now, we've got a motion.
Mr. Malta, so somebody else is.
I have a motion for the preliminary, in a second. I have a motion in a second.
Mr. Malta?
Hi.
Mr. Gardina?
Here.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Penisal?
Hi.
Mr. Mixal?
Hi.
Mrs. Wright?
Hi.
Mr. Fishani?
Hi.
Here. Make a motion for, uh, final, uh, for Bank of America lighting upgrade at nine eighty Ridge Road. Subsequent project for new cabinet panels. Subject to preliminary approval conditions. Any governmental fees. Subject to private public groups approvals. Subject to construction for a period of one year, as the one hundred and ten board is prior to, to nine eleven, only from the front. Conditions applying in final approval, the capital and property of the final, uh, plans. Yeah, I think, this is kind of a unique, you know. Yep, it is, yes, presented, that's a motion, in a second.
Duncan.
Mr. Malta?
Hi.
Mr. Penisal?
Hi.
Mrs. Wright?
Hi.
Mr. Mixal?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Gardina? Mr. Fishani?
Hi.
Alright, we're all set.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, good luck with that.
Next item on the agenda is fourteen fifty English Oak Drive accessory structure. Located at fourteen fifty English Oak Drive, Patrick Meredith, requesting preliminary final set plan approval. This includes a public hearing, associated with the construction of a twenty-four by twenty-four covered accessory structure with an eight foot by twenty-four covered overhang, seven hundred and sixty-eight square foot total. Uh, zero point nine two acre parcel, located in an R three single-family residential district under sections two fifty-nine dash eleven and three fifty dash thirty-six, with the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, uh, good evening, I'm Pat Meredith, and I reside at fourteen fifty English Oak Drive. Uh, thank you for considering the application I took forth before the board. Uh, my fiancee and I have lived here since August of twenty eighteen. When we were searching for this home, we were looking for a property that we could have some flexibility, and making some improvements and expand the footprint to meet our needs. Uh, in preparing for this project, I reviewed the last two years of similar applications, and where possible, I drove by the various buildings that had been approved. I believe my plan incorporates the good features of the ones that I saw. Uh, these buildings can be very industrial looking, if they're square and have a little pitched roofs on them, adding a few details to them can make them more attractive than I'd seen them. Uh, the building I'm proposing is on land that is not part of the original subdivision, and has many trees on it. Uh, I plan to tuck the building into some of the existing trees, and will be planting additional trees after I've taken down the last three of over twenty ash trees that were healthy in twenty eighteen when we purchased the property. Uh, they've all succumbed to EAD at this point. There will be no driveways to the new structure, as it's intended for lawn care equipment, patio furniture, my personal construction items, ladders, stampings, snow blower, et cetera. Uh, under the covered overhang, I'd like to store firewood, and have a picnic table and chairs for relaxing, uh, outside undercover in that area. Uh, we have no plans, uh, I just said that. Uh, I'm proposing a couple of clear roof panels for natural light, similar to the project that was approved at three seventy-five Webster Road, compared to twenty twenty-two. I'm open to other suggestions you may have, such as windows placed in the walls for aesthetics. Uh, also, I've, uh, self-performed two other additions on our home, uh, since twenty eighteen, one of them being a five hundred and seventy-five square foot garage addition, and the other a seventy-two square foot dinette addition. Uh, both of those were completed, and certificates of compliance issued for both. And, uh, I do have, uh, I know you like some visuals, so I've got a couple for you. So essentially, that's, this is the building that I'm proposing.
Oh, my goodness.
And, uh, this building here is, uh, a five hundred square foot building, that's just under twenty feet high, which is allowed, uh, by code without, uh, coming to the planning board. So, I feel like I've tried to design something that's kind of reduced in visual scale, if you will, and less obtrusive than, um, you know, the five hundred twenty-foot wall. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you build those?
I did, I, uh, I think it was the Sunday before the Fourth of July, it went the afternoon, and kind of put them together. But I thought it was, I thought it was, uh, very helpful, kind of, give us a scale for, um, potentially, you know, what I could do, but I, I wanna go a little, I wanna go a little bit wider, um, in the footprint, um, for, for the needs I have. And I'm also open to, you know, adding windows, or faux windows to the side, uh, you know, if there was someone that wanted to come and talk about aesthetics, I'm open to your suggestions. As far as the color, originally, I was thinking the same color as my house. Um, but I've also kind of liked the barn style look, um, I kind of modeled some of the, the colors that I chose that I, that I put in my packet, uh, with the building at the Schreier Farm Market. Um, so I'm open to doing something that's same colors as my house, or do, doing something that's a, a little bit different, contrasting, if you will, but more of kind of a rural, uh, style of building.
Do they have electricity in the building?
So currently, I have a circuit that runs to my shed, which is a light switch, an outlet, and a light over the, um, the door. So I would like to, uh, continue to utilize that one circuit that I have.
I, I think it looks nice, and either way, that or without windows, there's a plow in there, and it's set back, and it's, it looks like it's very tasteful, at times.
So one thing I did do is, um, this is a little different than the drawing that you have, but I shifted the, the opening that's, that's on the drawing you have underneath the ridge, and I added a three foot by three foot window, uh, on that one elevation. So, again, that's something that I'm open to suggestions, your thoughts on. Um, again, I want it to look nice for the neighbors, I want it to look nice when I look out the back window.
Can I ask you a favor, just come over, just show me exactly, I've got your drawing here, but I'm, I'm.
Sure.
Can anybody figure where this, where this, where it actually is relative to where the left, left is?
Yeah.
There should be, uh, uh, another thing in the back of here, that would be more helpful than that. Yes, this is your. So the original property came to this line right here.
Okay, so this is your shed, yeah?
That's where the.
Got it.
The existing shed is right in this one corner, and basically lays something.
Because I'm looking at this, and I didn't see it end there, so that's why I'm pushing it, okay, alright, good. Yeah, you got a deep one, and it's.
From trees?
Well set back, yeah, okay, thank you.
This was a single parcel?
Correct. Yeah, it's been re-subdivided three times, the original subdivision, and then a number of neighbors got together, purchased a thirteen acre parcel, split amongst them, and then, uh, then the last couple of years, purchased another piece from a neighbor on shed. What I wanted to do was be able to control a little bit more of that buffer area between our neighborhood and theirs, uh, knowing that the ash trees were dying, I wanted to, to be able to get rid of the ash, and then start planting additional trees back there, uh, in a variety of trees, so that in the long term, I've got a nice wooded acre, wooded area back there for, you know, a good buffer, so. It's been a little destructive the last couple of years, taking the trees down, but I hope in the long term, uh, I'll have a healthy, uh, growth back there.
Alright, again, this is a public hearing, so if there's any neighbors either for or against this project?
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, can I just take a look at the building's work?
Yeah, sure, no.
I live just to go to town.
Yeah, go, just give us your name and address.
Yeah, Arthur.
No, we're, we're into the light. There you go.
Arthur Porches, I live at, uh, fourteen forty-two English Oak Drive, that's one house over from the house.
Okay.
So, I was looking at the, the shed, and I, it's like you put out the other one. What is, what is that?
This is what is allowed by code, without coming to the board to get approval. So I'm, I'm, what I'm asking for is a little bit more than what, um, you can do without coming before the board and having a public hearing, to get input from your neighbors and the board, so. And it was, you know, it's showing kind of the extremes, if you will.
In other words, he could have done, he could have built that project without even coming in.
Well, I, and I, I saw that, uh, what ended up happening was, uh, they put the sign out in front of his house.
Mm-hmm.
And I stopped up the town, asked about it, they said, well, log on to the site, and he was, yeah. Well, all that week, it was never on the, uh, website. It just showed up, I think, last, uh, last Friday, or the week before. It was, it was a week after the sign went up, before it got onto the website, for plan. And so I, just for interest, I got on, looking at the town codes for sheds, accessory buildings, and sheds are, got more rules than accessory buildings. Accessory buildings, there's not a lot to say about them, except for the percentage of, uh, square footage in relation to the lot or the living area.
And location.
So, I mean, there's not a lot to say about, and the maximum height, I think it's twenty feet, something.
Plus height, location, square footage, there's, there's several kinds of things involved with it.
Yeah, fifteen foot side, sidelines, stuff like that, but, you know, it doesn't go into, but I, I put a shout out when I first moved out to Webster in, uh, two thousand and eight, and at the time, it was a fifteen foot sideline, blur line for a shed. Now I think it's down to five. Correct on that?
It's just been changed.
It's down to five, yeah. And at the time, I put it on, I was told you can't put on a, you know, concrete foundation, a, a footer, four. It, it, I put in coarse stone, so it was, nobody knew. But I guess now, I would assume you're gonna put on a concrete slab?
Right now, it's not the plan.
Well, right now, it's not, it's not stone. Okay, so, I just got, you know, go for it, you know, as far as, you know, but I was, I was just looking at the, the codes for the accessory buildings, and, uh, I don't know, I just didn't see a lot there, considering. It, it's, a lot of it's up to the board, on what they feel looks like an accessory building.
Well, uh, there's, here, I got the whole thing right here.
Yeah.
This is an accessory building.
Yeah, I got, I got a map.
A whole sheet, you know, well, so, it's very, you know, explains very well what you can and can't do, you know? Hopefully, through the hall.
So anyway, so I just, I just, I couldn't hear over here what their other building was, and you have, you have another shed out there, alright?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is starting to be on its last legs, and, yeah.
Okay, that's why I, I just, I just wanted to make it down to the accessory building.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm just, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anywhere else we can, okay, the closing of the hearing, bring it back up, anybody? So the shed is being thinned down, right?
It probably will eventually be taken down. I, I know that you're supposed to be able to have an accessory building and a shed, but I think with this building, I won't need that shed anymore.
Okay, okay, anybody, any?
No, I think it's a very nice, nice looking building, it was a very nice presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the model was very nice, too, with the electric.
Now, are, is this, is this stick built, or is this gonna be a pole barn joint?
It'll be pole barn style, yeah.
Alright, um, anybody, what the, is it, go ahead, go to secret.
Town of Westwood, we're considering a request by asking for Patrick Meredith to construct a twenty-four by twenty-four accessory structure, or about eight by twenty-four covered overhang, with seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet total. Uh, zero point nine eight, ninety-two acre parcel, located at one four five zero English Oak Drive, having SPO number zero five zero point zero four dash one dash eight eight point one one. Point number will classify as a proposed action, type two action under section six seventeen point five C nine, state environmental quarter review regulations, and that, of course, not subject to further review.
Okay, that's a motion, in a second.
Second.
A second, on a favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, that's good, um.
I have a question, you said, interesting, whether to have the new car match the house in comparison to color, or is somebody colored, does the board have a preference on that?
Given the proximity to the house and the tree, and the depth of the backyard, I, I wouldn't, I think he has two nice options, I just need a one, okay, quite lovely.
Alright, so now, make a motion to this?
Yeah, make a motion for preliminary. Make a motion for preliminary approval, fourteen fifty English Oak Drive accessory structure. Lot is restricted to one accessory building. The building is to conform with size and location presented in the plan. Basement of the building should conform well set tank requirements. The building should not be placed near to the front of the property than the rear line of footprint of the main building or residence panel. No point in the building will be higher than the existing structure. No commercial use shall occur in the parcel. The accessory building should be used for personal use only, as defined by town code. Significant construction shall occur within one year, as deemed by the planning board expired on seven eleven twenty twenty-four. Comply with all requirements of any state, county, or county agency. Outside look to be compliant with the standards of town Webster. Subject to all engineering governmental fools. Subject to all the public governmental fees. Subject to resolution of final approvals.
Okay, that's a motion, in a second. A second?
Mr. Malta?
Hi.
Mr. Mixal?
Hi.
Mrs. Wright?
Hi.
Mr. Penisal?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Gardina?
Hi.
Mr. Fishani?
Hi.
Alright, make a final one, is there?
Yeah, make a motion.
Roll with it.
Make a motion for final approval, uh, accessory structure at fourteen fifty English Oak Drive. Subject to private governmental panels, subject to, subject to voluntary approval conditions, subject to all people governmental fees, subject to private public rules approvals. Significant construction shall occur within one year, deemed by the planning board expired seven eleven twenty-four. Conditions applying in final approval, affecting the property to the planning of that plans. Subject to resolution of final approvals, and we've got two minutes, and subject to the, uh, government.
David, do you want to, do you want to use the date?
Yeah. Use the date.
Yeah, it's got the date, just, just use the.
June nineteen, what is it?
Twenty twenty-three.
Okay, that's a motion. Alright, have a motion, in a second.
Mr.? Mr. Malta?
Hi.
Mr. Mixal?
Hi.
Mrs. Wright?
Hi.
Mr. Penisal?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Gardina?
Hi.
Mr. Fishani?
Hi.
Alright, I guess you're all set.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, pardon me, is number twelve forty-two Lake Road, accessory apartment garage expansion, located.
Located at twelve forty-two Lake Road, the applicant Matt Lester. Is requesting preliminary final site plan approval, including a public hearing associated with the expansion of existing detached accessory structure and construction. An accessory apartment on a three point two six acre parcel. Located in an R one single family residential district under sections two, six, nine dash eleven. Three five zero dash thirty-six and three five zero dash fifty, and throw the town Webster. Applicant requests waiver for overall size of accessory apartment, maximum of five hundred square feet permitted. Ten sixteen square feet being proposed.
That's you again.
Nice to see you again, yes. Let's see, brought from Wazooka, nice to be up at the podium again. Having the fellas is here again, Concassid, and our homeowner, Matt Lester, is here tonight. You have seen this, this proposal to expand his carriage house. The planning board issued a favorable recommendation to the zoning board, which needed to grant two area variances, which in fact were already granted a couple of weeks ago. So we are now back to get approval. I think the one thing that changed is there was a little discussion about the interpretation of how, of the code at the zoning board meeting. So that was kind of reframed to then, if I get this right, they decided to call it an accessory apartment, maybe that was the board's decision. So in addition to asking for your approval, we are requesting a waiver of the, for the size of.
Size of.
Of the, of the, yeah. Nothing's changed about the application, it's still, you know, it's a high quality, you know, proj- project. It's Matt home. He is planning for his family to live in this structure while they do a massive major renovation of their primary residence. They love living on the lake, their whole life revolves around living on the lake. And they intend for this to be, you know, something that their family uses going forward. As far as any impact, and in respect to the waiver, the code requires that the board consider any health, safety impact on the neighbors. We have provided the communications from two neighbors to the west who are both aware of this. One of them has a similar type of a structure. The neighbors don't have any issue. The closest, most immediate neighbor to the west, who would be most affected if anybody were to be affected, is on board with this and consent has, has given their consent. Essentially, there's a structure there. It's gonna push a little closer to the road, but it's still gonna be over three hundred feet from the road. If anything, it's gonna be kind of cute and adorable with a little porch and from the outside, it's gonna look like a three bay carriage garage. It'll just have some living space. Oh, there's like a. Yeah, I always mix up which is the porch and which is the patio. The porch is in the.
The north side.
Yes, okay. I mix up porch and patios, so. Yeah, so it should be, you know, you know, just replacing what's there in essentially the same spot. It's gonna come a little bit further forward, just, you know, be a pretty little structure on a very substantial sized piece of property where it won't have any impact on any neighbor. There's across the street, the closest neighbor, I think Matt owns the barn across the street, and I believe there's a, a group home, but also a good distance. So it shouldn't impact anybody, won't change the, you know, the character of the neighborhood anyway. These structures are somewhat becoming somewhat common along the lake as well, so.
I have a question, I don't know if this came up lately because we talked about the, the guests and it says it would be used to accommodate guests. Just family, not short-term rental, so it won't be used as a short-term rental?
We'll, we'll have friends, my wife and I have friends that live out of town that we hope to invite to show up our town and they'll stay there, and so, but no.
But, but not for like, on Airbnb, some short-term rental type arrangement?
No, that wouldn't, it's not something we're interested in.
It's not, it's not a commercial project, it's, you know, just.
Personal.
Well, there, there's a lot of Airbnb's that are in people's basements now, so there's, they're coming off flavors.
My three children would scare anyone off.
Okay, um. We saw this before, went to the zoning board, received its variances. It's back here for preliminary approval, site plan. And I guess we'd have to make a, we'd have to make a waiver for the size, a separate motion, or just include it in the preliminary? Include it all together?
Yeah.
Anybody, no, it's, it's a public hearing, but anybody here have anything to say personally?
No, it's gorgeous.
All right, again, this is a public hearing, there's nobody wishing to speak. Seeing anyone, we're back, closing, public hearing.
We're talking twelve forty-two Lake Road, right?
Yeah. It's a public hearing. I missed it. Oh, yeah. Nothing's changed, it's got its variances, we're okay with it. All right, wanna move forward? Go ahead. Go to the secret.
Town Webster planning board consider request by applicant Matt Lester to expand an existing detached accessory structure. And construct an accessory apartment located at twelve forty-two Lake Road, three point two six eight two six acre parcel. Having S P L number zero five point zero five dash one dash one zero. Planning board classifies proposed actions as type two action under section six seventeen point five C nine, stated by our model following review regulations, and therefore not subject to further review.
Motion, need a second, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, can you make a motion for preliminary approval?
Yeah, make a motion for preliminary approval. Twelve forty-two Lake Road accessory department garage expansion. Also make a motion that we, uh, give a request and waiver for overall size of an accessory apartment, which is maximum of five hundred square feet permitted. This is being ten thousand and one thousand sixteen square feet. Will be proposed.
One sixteen eight, I think, is it?
That's it?
Hundred and sixty-nine square feet?
So not so much number, they.
One thousand sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yeah, sixteen.
What thousand is, everything's top, and what, what is the number?
One oh one six.
Okay.
There is, what's different, what's in the announcement is different in the plan? One oh six nine or one?
So I'm not sure which number they put in the announcement, just to be totally clear. The structure, the entire size of the structure is two thousand eighty-five square feet and the footprint is a thousand sixty-nine. I believe that ten sixteen?
Ten sixteen is the second floor.
It's the second floor residential space. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and that dimension Matt just pointed out is on the drawing, on the east elevation. He does, the architect has a second floor apartment, ten sixteen square feet on that. But he got the plans.
Okay.
Subject to various encampments. Subject to determination as we gave for proposed variances. All pools shall be constructed according to specifications of the Town Webster. All center look is being compliance with the standards of Town Webster. Comply with all requirements of any state, county, or county agency. The pools are subject to drawing number.
Um. T I's?
Looks like drawing number.
T ones, point zero. Shows out here.
So just shop number eight two two dash zero eight five is prepared for change of design associated.
And this is the final approval.
Okay, that's a motion? Second.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Kessel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Fisshani?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion for final site plan approval. Twelve forty-two Lake Road accessory department garage expansion. Subject to project review committee candidates. Subject to preliminary approval conditions. Subject to all applicable government governmental fees. Subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board expire on seven eleven twenty twenty-four. Conditions of voluntary approval are depicted on the current page of the planning design plans. The pools are subject to drawing, same drawing number as the.
I know he's using it just for personal use, but he should probably just include that, like he always would.
Yeah, the, uh, accessory apartment is pretty useful.
Personal use only, which he intends to do anyways, but just for the record, it's usually, listen, power. Okay, that's a motion, need a, that's a motion. Okay, we have a motion, you said.
Second.
A second, yeah.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Kessel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Fisshani?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set, we'll look at Roger.
Thank you. I love this little plant thing.
Next item on the agenda. Fourteen thirty-two Schlecker Road accessory structure.
I think that, was that on table?
That's been tabled.
No, that was tabled, yeah, forget that.
Last item on the agenda tonight. Two forty-three Pebble Beach Trail accessory structure located in the two forty-two Pebble Beach Trail. Applicant Ted Hosmer is requesting a sketch plan review. Associated with renovation and expansion of an existing accessory structure. On one point six four acre parcel. Located in an R three single family residential district under section three five oh dash thirty-six of the code of the town Webster.
Yes, sir. Hello, I'm Ted Hosmer, I live at two forty-three Pebble Beach Trail, purchased property back in two thousand and three. The garage was built in the seventies, I think, when they had extremely compact cars because nothing nowadays would have necessarily be able to go into it. There's been some damage to the building through water and whatnot and animals. And about ten years ago, I asked local designer to go through the property and make some renovations, and this is what he came up with. And past four years, we've been going through approval with the D E C and finally reached a.
Now, this is where, you got your variances, didn't you?
I've been going before the zoning board next week.
Next week, okay, so. And you've got D E C, you've got permits.
Yes.
Received them. And the intent, okay, it looks like the house, but what is it? It's a workshop you're putting into?
It's supposed to look like a carriage house, so to speak. It's a detached garage, it's gonna be a working shop.
Is there a loft and big space in the?
It's for storage. The house has literally no closets. I'm amazed how simple they look back then. It's been an interesting maneuver.
Okay.
Actually, it looks more like the house than a garage, carriage.
It does have a second storage.
It does, yes.
It's just not included in the.
Um, I gave it to, the gentleman in the engineering asked me for it, I was able to give him the D E C permit, which actually had been up before.
You have it before, it's just all storage?
Uh, storage, yes. I'm big into every type of sport you can imagine. I have, do everything from mountain to snowmobiling and water skiing, and it just seems like we're gonna drag enough space.
Okay, so by the way, the intent's not for rental, but to use for income or for rent?
No, initially, my parents were alive and I was planning ahead for them. Since then, my mother's passed and my father's ninety-five and he's worried about it right now.
Now, what, what, I don't know what variance actually you have to get? Is it four dollars each?
Yeah, there's a couple. There will be a signed setback variance as well as to allow or to legalize having a second accessory structure in the parcel. Cause I believe there is one down the shoreline. Yeah.
Yeah.
And for the placement, I know it's a very regularly shaped lot, but it's technically not behind the front wall of the building. So there's, yeah, two or three variances that apply for.
All right, so in that case, really, we can't add that.
Well, it's just a sketch plan.
Yeah, that's all it is, it's not saying, it's gotta be a variance.
It's another lovely building, though.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't do it.
So you need to, you need to make a.
There's like three lovely, um, buildings here.
You've got a solid chain.
All right, so you're gonna go to the zoning board, what, next, their next meeting?
Next Tuesday.
Apply for your variances and come back here? Okay, sounds good.
Very nice, appreciate it.
Okay, thanks a lot. Yeah, okay, we've got.
So we need to table that?
To table the.
Yeah, we want a table that's.
We'll table a puffin's stuff smoke shop sign until August first.
Well, twice now?
Sorry, this is.
August first, okay.
I have an approach, it's third level, I can't, I'm scared. This is what, second, third?
Third shelf.
Did somebody second the table?
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor of that? Aye.
All right.
All right, we need to make a motion, we should make it as a motion. The, the lead agency is generally taken by the planning board of the zone, or the planning board of the town board. In this case, the town board has chosen to go ahead and take lead agency of this project. And, the, yes, I'm sorry. And one of the, one of the criteria is a letter to, you know, all the participants, the elders. They got thirty days to respond, like county and state, federal, and so on and so forth. If they're taking, we should be a respondent to, I believe also, so we're recommending we make a letter of recommendation that we accept the fact that they're taking lead agency to the project. So I'll call that a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're good with that. Any minutes that we had to do?
No.
We're gonna say we're set now.
Well, it's June sixth, but, um.
Nope, not that.
Okay, that's it then, right? Okay, we're good. Anything else, anybody, anything you were bringing up or? Oh, Josh, we're about your, this.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I distributed earlier the.
Yeah, so, yeah, I distributed, uh, earlier the extensive, uh, sheet index for the plans for the Fairlife project that we're expecting to receive later this week. Um, so I did go over it with, um, Mr. Fischani. And obviously, these plans are gonna be hard to read at the eleven by seventeen scale, so... Yeah. Um, they're probably gonna be larger in nature. Uh, not the full-size tablecloths, as we like to refer to them as, but something kind of in between just to make sure that you're able to read and, and see certain things. But, um, we kind of went through this list and identified what we thought, um, the planning board members would be most interested in. Do you have their sheet that I marked up? Have you got it? I do, yeah. Um, so, so I could go through and then if anyone feels strongly that they'd like some additional... Yeah, right. Information, then Catherine and I can work to, to get that to you. Um, either electronically, that, we're expecting it to be a very voluminous submission. So it's gonna be challenging to do it how we normally do it, providing ten copies of everything. Um, but there's, if there's specific things that you're all interested in that I don't mention, um, just reach out to us and we'll certainly get you, um, whatever specific plan sheets you're interested in. But for the, the overall group, um, we, we've identified, uh, the cover sheet, C zero zero one. Um, the overall site plan. Um, the overall existing conditions plan. And then we skip down, 'cause I guess it's on multiple pages, 'cause there's multiple parcels involved. But then we go back to the overall geometry plan. The overall utility plan. The overall grading and drainage plan. Uh, overall initial erosion and sediment control plan. And the overall final erosion and sediment control plan. Um, the overall line of sight plan, which is C two twenty. Uh, the grading and drainage profiles. And then, uh, the utility details. Overall landscaping plans, and then the landscaping details. So if there's any specific portion of the site, um, you know, if you wanna drill in deeper and you want it closer to any particular, one of these indexes, we can accommodate that. But as the normal distribution, what, what I just read, that's what they're gonna be provided in hard copy form. Mm-hmm.
Can you count, does it, do you need anything else here? But there's the detail ending here, guys.
I think the overall, your visual overall sheets are the best.
The what?
The overall sheets, which are kind of like those.
Yeah. I mean, I, I couldn't, Josh and I were going through it, I, I couldn't see, I mean, utility details, I mean, that's more engineering stuff, I mean, it's nothing that we, we need to get too involved in. Sanitary sewer proof profiles, that's engineering detail, right? Unless you guys feel you want, if there's something there you want us, I mean...
Should we get, did you say the overall versus all of the detail? Or that we...
Right, yeah, we've identified most... We'll get the overall.
So we're getting, if there's all these pages, but we're just getting the overall.
Correct, right. And then if there's anything within there that you noticed or wanna see closer on an additional... Mm-hmm. Plan, then you can request that and we'll give it to you.
Thanks for planning the development of this land.
Right, yeah, I figured, yeah, we figured that that, what I, what we identified would be the most interesting enough for the planning board. Yeah, yeah, overall line of sight, or you mean that individual?
Yeah, what if you want...
Okay.
It's only two.
Right, yeah, that's, there's not too much there, so, yeah, we could certainly do that. And then in terms of, you know, I, I did send an email regarding the secret. You know, Derek downloaded the full document electronically, this is literally almost a foot thick hard copy. Um, so, but if any of you would like portions of that, like the traffic study results, the noise, lighting studies, if, if you want copies of those, we can also, um, get that to you as well. So. I think personally, the traffic study and the way they engineer it, they show all these numbers and how many turns there are, that doesn't make any sense to me. I know the reality of what's happening, you know, and, and I want somebody to be up there speaking about what they're proposing to do it again, I'm gonna bring it up again, is, is they're claiming they don't need a stoplight and, and extension coming over a solid road. And I'm gonna argue that, they do need a stoplight there. With those trucks pulling out on a solid road, it'd be a disaster. It's already bad there, hell, getting down by, you know, we've talked this, that, Dave. Derek down by Schlegel Road there?
Absolutely.
It's ridiculous.
It's nuts.
I, I, I agree. And then, and now they're...
Especially on the houses and all that stuff.
And it's getting worse, and now with this coming, and they'll have that new subdivision down the road there. Um, with these trucks coming, well, ultimately, they'll be able to come out around Salt, you know, but that's, uh...
Was that the one that's just through, when there's only a stop, one-way stop?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's...
It should have, should have a stop, a stop.
We, we have a basket that has literally no traffic.
Aye.
Has four-way stop.
Yep, that's my argument, I've used that with these guys from the state, they don't hear it.
No, no, I don't.
Uh, that's what I meant, I'm sorry. There is a bit of death there yet, so they figured that there's nothing wrong with it.
There was an accident the other day.
Yeah, there's an accident in the coffin. Yeah. But anyways, that's, but I think that's one of the things that... Yeah, their, their traffic study basically said that the existing counts don't warrant a four-way signal, but it would have two stop signs on either side of Salt. And the traffic on Salt would have no device. But the trucks would just have a stop sign coming out of zero. In other words, they're creating another situation, just like Schlegel and Salt, very nice. Yeah, I mean, very surprising, I, I really... It's ridiculous. Well, we'll, we'll argue that. Yeah. We can argue that.
Why, because there's no stoplight, I think it's a... Somebody said there's no, like you can get on a four without competing other traffic? You know, you merge in both directions?
No, no, there's lights there.
No, no, I'm saying, yeah, sat there, whereas instead of having, you know, go off NASCAR, whereas like it's a stoplight and, you know, all the trucks would back up, whereas on, uh, from Salt, they could get up to speed on both ways.
Mm-hmm, yeah. All right, anyways, I guess, we still have, aren't we? Yeah. Well, we're all set, I guess we're all done, we've done and the longest we could do here tonight, right? I guess we're done for the evening, thanks for coming in.
So now that you have nothing, you want to swing by, uh, die one. Go check it out, stop by seven eighty, and say, "I'm not a senator." Who cares about you? Hey, you're out there? I'll be at the other end, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm by my own trip.
It is good.
Tell my son hi.